Morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, meeting of the Reno County Commission. Our first order of business today is the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. Stand with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Comments by me starting this morning, I'd like to welcome in our audience today is Mark Stephan, who has been elected by the Reno County Republican Party to fulfill the remaining period of Bob Bush's term. We understand that this process has gone to the governor's office, and I believe that the governor intends to sign that document today, and also the Secretary of State. And after that time...
Let me make sure it's on. The microphone.
After that time, he'll be a member of the commission fulfilling Bob Bush's term. At this point in time, we'll have our update from our interim health officer, Karen Hammer Smith, and emergency management director, Adam Wyershire. Karen, would you like to go first, or want Adam to go first? Whichever? Okay. I've got a coin if you'd like to flip it.
We're good. I do have the proclamation that... Would you like me to read that in its entirety?
No, I'd like to read the proclamation. You might tell about it and tell why you're asking for the commission to make this proclamation today, and go through your report, and then I think I'll read it, please.
Okay. As of today, we have 2,371 total COVID cases, 717 total active cases, 325 community active cases, so those do not include the inmates. We have a 14-day positive test rate of 25.8%, which is from October the 29th. We have a 14-day new case count from October the 29th of 340. We have had 18 deaths in the community. That does include inmates because they live within Reno County. And clusters, we've had 21 right now. Last week, the positive test rate was at 20.1% as of October 20th, and we had 332 new cases. The hospital reported this morning that they have 20 COVID patients in. They have three intubated patients right now regarding the COVID. On Sunday was their highest day of COVID. They had 27 cases in the hospital with four of them being on ventilators. That doesn't include the other breathing apparatuses that they have to use with these. They have seen a trend up from five to six, which was just a month or so ago, into the high teens, and now they've been in the twenties here most recently in the last week. They are definitely seeing an uptick. In the clinical setting, Dr. Polly has let me know that they are also seeing quite a few more patients in the clinics. Testing patients seem to be sicker. It might be because, you know, they're in more vulnerable populations as we have more community spread. That's anecdotal, but they are definitely talking about how sick these patients are. Staffing is a huge issue at the hospital, and therefore, we have really tried to improve the measures that we can mitigate and slow the spread of COVID. We know that people are tired of hearing about COVID. We know that people do not... They don't want our lives changed how we have. But unfortunately, this has changed our lives, and we need to take action. The hospitals, it was reported on KWSCH this morning, that the hospitals in Wichita are also full in their ICUs. This is not just, you know, subject to Reno County. This is our surrounding communities. We have a lot of COVID. It is respiratory season. We're going to have a lot more. We're in for a hard winter. There is no immunizations for this, and therefore, these are the things that we can do to slow the spread. It's wearing your mask, social distancing, really try to stay at home when you can. We need to do the essential things. We don't want businesses closed. We don't want restaurants closed. But we have to be very intentional about the things that we're doing. Otherwise, we're not helping this. We're not helping our hospitals. And that could be anybody that needs a hospital, an ER visit. So it's not just COVID patients, but when your staff is completely used with COVID patients, if you have an emergency motor vehicle accident, even a simple appendicitis, you know, you've got to have people in the emergency room to be able to take care of you. And, you know, then your ICU, you have to make sure that it's not too full as well.
You know, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You know, if Dr. Digner is going to be here, I was going to ask him. You can probably know this with your experience. But we talk about staff, and just for my benefit, our benefit, and the people's benefit, if you could get people to cross-train and come from, say, Orthopedics or OB-GYN or another port in the hospital that works there. I know it's not easy to go from there to ICU. What would you say would be the length of time to train someone up to go to the ICU? Because the new facilities in ICU are very forward-thinking when they put those in there. And that's tremendous. If you had a chance to tour that, I did, and those are tremendous facilities. But just give me an idea, or can you?
I would say a general orientation would be, and it depends on your background, anywhere from six weeks to six months. You know, when you're talking about critical care. If you're talking of a brand-new person into the field, definitely six months before they even feel like they know what they're really doing. They can certainly lend that helping hand, but you also have to be willing to work in those areas. Most people choose their field based on their interest, so that's why you have long-term care facility nurses, you have ER nurses, you have a pediatric nurse. They don't necessarily have the same skill sets in their personalities. It's not that they can't do that. They've all passed the exact same licensure, but their skill sets, they've probably honed to their personalities, and it's a very uncomfortable change. So it's...
I was just curious, because we talk about staffing, and they say, "Well, there's nurses out," but they're not.
They're not trained for critical care. Critical care is a very detail-oriented skill set that some people just don't enjoy working in that. You have to be on your toes. You have to like to move around adrenaline and have to really enjoy those types of things.
And I was wondering, and I don't want to interfere... I'll ask you another question later on, but since you talked about staff, I was just wanted to interfere a little bit and get some more basic information.
Yeah.
Karen, I was interested in the situation report, the one that came out Monday, November 2nd at 12:00 PM. Says we're right on the line between moderate and red. I guess I felt like we were in the red zone, but this shows that we're in the moderate. Could you explain that?
So the red zone for school gating criteria, we are clearly in the red zone. Actually, I think it starts about 15% to be in the red zone. We're at 25% this morning, as of October the 29th. So that is clearly in the red zone, and those are different modifications. So when you look at a community, we're doing some things well. We're doing a lot of community testing. So that puts it in a category that is like, okay, this is where you're at. So if you go to the community testing on that website, it will literally break absolutely everything down. So you have primary indicators and you have secondary indicators. One of the things that DJ, who is our analyst, has said that we don't have that is a huge indicator, is exactly what is the capacity of the hospital. So they haven't broken down... They let us know every day where they're at as far as capacity in the hospital, but if you have 180 beds, but you don't have 180 patients, you know, are you full before that? So when I keep saying to you, "The ICU is full," that only accounts for, you know, 20 of their 76 patients in the hospital. But what it is, is there is a staffing shortage.
Sure.
So that's where there is one big piece of a community indicator that we do not have that DJ said is very important. So we have two primary indicators, that we have our positive test rate is elevated and our 14-day case count is elevated. We do know that we have a lot of clusters, so that's something else that we know what's going on in our community, even though we also know that we have community spread. But it has to do with the primary and the secondary indicators on that.
Okay. Just a note, I noticed in this morning's Wichita paper, it said that 99 of 105 Kansas counties are in the red zone at this point in time. I think only one in the green zone. It's something that we all need to be concerned about. I was also concerned by the article in Hutch News that said of the COVID patients, four of them are over 80. One of them was in the 70 to 79 region. Certainly, these people are very, very fragile people. And so I'm sorry that they received this virus and have to be in the hospital. I think on a personal note, of the 18 fatalities that we've had in Reno County, obviously, we've protected names for COBRA reasons and so forth, but I have knowledge now that a good friend of mine died recently in Hutchinson Hospital. I think he was in his 80s, a friend that I had lunch with often, and I will miss him greatly. And I'm sorry that the virus spread to the point that he received it. So Karen, do you have other items that you want to address today?
We're doing the kickoff challenge and just letting you know about that, which then has to do with the proclamation as well.
Okay.
What's the average day? Is there such a thing as an average day? Say you're not in my age and older, in your 70s and 80s.
I wouldn't specifically know the average day. I do know that the average day of a COVID patient is longer than the average day of other patients in the hospital. So when you talk about somebody having, you know, open-heart surgery, there's an average day there. COVID patient is going to stay there longer. They do consider somebody that is COVID-positive, you go 20 days from onset of symptoms in a COVID-positive patient that is severely ill before you would say they were non-infectious. Where if it's a minor infection, it is 10 days from an epidemiological standpoint.
Because I know I had a friend I know that was just in overnight, and I just was curious, you know, with regard to how many are overnight, how many required, just...
And you can tell from the indexes. Yesterday, we had a change in the cases from what was on there, from the cases that are on there this morning as far as admissions. So some people just come in, get a little bit of medication and some breathing help, and then somebody else might be in there and be, you know, to the point that they get it on the ventilator.
And I presume if they were in there, they're considered hospitalized and...
Yes.
Regardless of how long they stay.
Speak a little bit more about, some of the public probably doesn't know about your 10-day challenge that you're putting together and so forth. Would you talk about when this starts and how that's going to work, please?
So the 10-day challenge is really to just get people to change behavior. 10 days is not going to cut off an incubation period. 10 days is what we really want people to really intentionally think about, what they can do to change their behavior, to get in groups of 10 if you're doing things, you know, social events, you know, they really need to think, "Does this need to happen?" Do things by a Zoom-type platform. Anything that you can think of, we need to slow the spread. We shut down everything in March. We know what happened to our economy. We do not want those types of things to happen, but they happened because we were looking at what was going on in New York, and we did the same thing in Kansas, and we didn't have any virus here. Now, it probably slowed the spread because we also didn't have a lot of travel going on at that time. Now, you know, you went through the summer months. Now we're to the winter months. It's colder. People are going to come indoors. So the challenge is to think about all those types of things and think how we can slow the spread. You know, that is the challenge. It's kicking off tomorrow. Then we're also going to talk to the chamber and DJ Gearing, who's our analyst. He's going to speak to kind of the things that are on our dashboard. Elliot Proster, who is our epidemiologist, will speak as well. We're going to talk to the business side of things. What does it look like if somebody has COVID in your business? How does that shut down a department? You know, how can you utilize things so that you are social distancing, that you're six feet apart, not six feet apart in a small building or small room all day long? If you're in a large building, you can social distance quite a bit more. And look at all the different things that we do so that if somebody is quarantined, how you can keep your business open, how can... How those questions can be answered. So that's something that we're doing tomorrow, 12:45 to 1:15. And then we're having a town hall meeting so that you can hear from physicians on Thursday evening, and that will be speaking to what's going on at the hospital, what the clinicians that are working on these things see day in and day out with these patients, and also hear about staffing and why it's important as a community that we take these steps.
Okay, so the luncheon Zoom meeting that the chamber is sponsoring is 12:30 tomorrow?
It's 12:45.
12:45 tomorrow. And to access that, how do you access that?
They would need to call the chamber, because the chamber has... They will send out a Zoom link to all their chamber members, but I'm sure that anybody else would want to join, they could.
Do you say somebody tests positive, they show no signs, their family shows no signs, they've got a job, can they get retested in two or three days for the county?
No, we do not do that, because the state, from an epidemiological standpoint, if you're positive, it's a 10-day isolation period. So we would not retest you.
Okay, that bothers me a little bit, because, and I understand, KDHE and all of this has set these criteria up, but it bothers me a little bit that here we are, football players, congressional people, they can all get retested, but the common man out here that has a job can't get retested. It just bothers me. Okay? So I'd like to see something with regard to if we could work something out there that they could get retested when they haven't shown any signs at all for a period of time besides the 10 or 14 days. Just my thoughts.
Karen, would you like to explain the reason that you're asking for Commissioner Hurst and I to sign the proclamation that we have before us?
We're asking that the proclamation be signed so that we have support among our community members. We have on our challenge, we have the city of Hutch is on board, the hospital is on board, the Hutch Clinic, the Health Department. As far as doing these things, and we would like your support as well, so that we can really have people think about what we're doing. So the proclamation goes through the process of the types of things that we are asking citizens to think about and to really do as we move forward through the winter months.
Okay. With that, I'll read the proclamation that's before Commissioner Hurst and myself. Whereas cases of COVID-19 in Reno County continue to increase, and whereas hospital and area health resources are being overwhelmed with COVID cases, and whereas Reno County continues to have increasing community contact with holidays, business, and social gatherings, and whereas increased awareness is needed to jumpstart behaviors that curve the spread as we are into respiratory illness season. And furthermore, the Reno County Health Department recommends cutoff COVID 10-day challenge, limiting in-person contact for 10 days. And furthermore, participation in the cutoff COVID challenge is encouraged so that healthy behavior is practiced during the 10 days and then continued during the pandemic, including wearing a mask and social distancing six feet at all times in indoor spaces that are not your home, plus maintaining at least six feet of distance outdoors, washing and sanitizing hands frequently, working from home if possible and holding meetings online rather than in person, avoiding being indoors without non-household members except for school, work that cannot be done from home and activities deemed essential. E, any group-related events to highly encourage social distancing, wearing a mask, offer online services, provide hand sanitizer, and limit situations that involve singing, refreshments, and social gatherings. F, supporting local businesses by wearing a mask, social distancing when in person, and if possible, ordering online or by phone with curbside delivery. G, support local restaurants by social distancing and wearing a mask or orders to go. H, continue to maintain healthy behaviors by keeping up with routine physician, dental, and eye appointments. I, maintaining a balanced diet and routine exercise. Furthermore, by practicing safe behavior, we aim to reduce the average daily case count and positive test rate by late November. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, that November 4th through 13th shall be declared as cutoff COVID challenge. And witness, therefore, we have set our hands and caused the seal of Hutchinson, seal of Reno County, Kansas, to be affixed to this this third day of November 2020. Karen, Commissioner Hurst and myself have signed this proclamation for you.
Karen, I would certainly like to thank you for all your work on this. I know we've had conversations, and I appreciate the fact that we were communicating together and worked something out that won't satisfy everybody, but it does at least reinforce what we need to do. So I do appreciate the fact that we were able to communicate together and come up with something that was workable. So I just want to let people know how hard this Health Department's working.
Thank you.
I can't tell how... I can't explain how hard they're working.
Neither one of us can explain how hard our Health Department has been working through this situation. Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Hurst. Karen, if you have no more items, we'll have Adam.
Thank you for the support. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Wyershire, Emergency Management Director. I just want to give you a broad overall picture, again, like I've done in the past. The Board of County Commissioners cleared a public health emergency on March 19th. That's extended until December 31st of this year. The state, their disaster declaration is set to expire on November 30th, or on November 15th of 2020. On November 15th, if that does not get extended, there's the local mask ordinance, or the state mask ordinance that also go along with that. Those are executive orders 2052 and 2059. The only local ordinance we have in place right now is Local 2003, and that's a health order limiting mass gatherings to 100 or less. KDHE reports an incident total of 89,227 cases. That's an increase of 4,046 since they reported on Friday. And they also have 1,046 deaths, which is an increase of 17. KDHE is currently tracking 261 active outbreaks. There's non-congregate shelters currently set up in seven counties. Reno County is not one of those. The non-congregate sheltering has 86 individuals as of yesterday that are staying at those shelters. Those are available to Reno County if they are required. It would become from like a large facility such as the prison. Those have not been requested yet, but we have offered those. Governor Kelly and KDHE Secretary Lee Norman have their press conference this Wednesday, November 4th, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. It'll be a typical update from them. When you look at the Johns Hopkins University numbers, they're the ones who are tracking the COVID-19 cases, and they've been tracking that since the beginning. So the United States saw our first COVID-19 case on January 21st of this year. It took 98 days, or on April 28th, to get to our first million. Currently, we're just over nine million cases, and we received that last nine million from October 16th, 14 days later. So the first million took 98 days. Our last million we received took mere 14 days. There's some Health and Human Services information. So there's a lot of agencies that are struggling getting gowns and gloves, personal protective equipment for the medical care facilities. When all this took off, Health and Human Services, or HHS, had a goal to receive a 90-day supply, especially of gloves. That would be 4.5 billion gloves for the U.S. So far, as of this past week, they'd only received 2 million of those. So if that tells you kind of where we are as a country. Right now, we've had some struggles getting gloves and N95 masks. We have not found a vendor for N95 masks, but the state has still been providing those to us. As far as gloves go, we did find a vendor for those, and we spent some Cares money to purchase those, but those are still approximately 45 to 50 days, 55 days out. So they're in the pipeline, but it could take a little while to get here. Kansas has a 14-day rolling average of 800 new COVID-19 cases a day, and 12 new deaths a day, and 32 hospitalizations. They are reporting that 83% of those are from people 65 or older. So that's that risk group that we've been talking about since the beginning of this. So from emergency management standpoint, we're still working through this. We're not close to the recovery stage. I think everyone's tired of hearing about it at this point, but I think it's important that we keep pushing information out to the public the best we can. And I will tell you that our PIO, the new PIO, Lori Moody, has been great. She's been watching Facebook for us and putting out information, putting together some stuff for us as well, as well as BauerCom. We've worked together with them, too. So as public information, it's been good for us. That's all I have for you this morning.
Adam, how is your supply of masks for the businesses in Reno County holding up?
So we have plenty right now. We received 500,000 two Fridays ago, so not last Friday, but the previous Friday, and those are still available online. So we currently have three-plate masks, gowns, and face shields that are available to any businesses that require those.
And you would encourage businesses that need to have their people closer together to contact your department and obtain those items?
So there's a form online on our RenoGov.org webpage. It's a PPE form. If you fill that out and submit it per the instructions on that form, someone will be in contact with you and give you a location to pick them up. It depends on if it's... If you're just getting 50 for your business, it's pretty easy just to push them out to the Health Department, but if it's maybe 10,000, we might have them go to a different facility, so we're not moving those twice.
Ron, do you have questions, Adam?
I'm going to try to make your report a little easier. I'm not so much... Personally, I'm not so much interested in the U.S. numbers. I'm more concerned with Reno County and not necessarily how many days since it started and everything. I'm more concerned with Reno County than I am the U.S. numbers myself, so...
Okay. But I think, Ron, the state numbers certainly have an indication of what Reno County might either have seen or see in the future. We're very close, and people communicate back and forth to other counties. So I agree that state and local numbers are probably the most important.
Yeah. Yeah, state, we travel county to county a lot.
Adam, I'd like to thank you, as we both thank Karen, for your additional efforts during this period. I know your office has spent numerous hours. You're used to an emergency that comes and goes in maybe five hours, or maybe five to 10, 15 days. Your office is not used to an ongoing situation, so I want to thank you for your efforts during this time.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay. At this point in time, our next item on the agenda is for any public comment for items not on the agenda. If there's anybody outside that wants to comment, they need to come forward, state their name and address, and limit their comments to five minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to make any comments today?
None out there.
None out there? None out there? Okay, if not, we'll be moving on to determining additions or revisions to the printed agenda. Commissioner Hurst, do you have additions?
I have none.
I have none. County Administrator, Mr. Partington, do you have additions?
Just the Sparks grant nonprofit amount of $823,829.38 to the consent agenda.
Okay, we will add that. Hurst, would you make a motion to approve the revised agenda?
I would so move to approve the revised agenda.
I would second it. Who's?
I'll call.
Okay, Randy's calling the roll today. Our clerk's office is all at the election, doing a great job, I'm sure, and so Mr. Partington will act as the clerk today.
Okay, Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sellers, one additional item, I think the soon-to-be Commissioner Stephan would like to speak.
Okay.
You slipped by that five-minute deal quicker than I can catch on my policies. Yeah, I'm Dr. Mark Stephan. I appreciate getting to be here. I'm disappointed that our county health department people left, but I did get to speak to Karen very briefly. Yeah, I want to express my appreciation, get to be here, and I look forward to the next two months. You know, I've been sent here by the Reno County Republican Party to kind of breathe some fresh air into particularly this China virus situation. You know, there's a great number of people out there that do feel like we've taken on a very narrow narrative and are looking through this in a very, very narrow field of view. And through my two months on this commission, awaiting, obviously, the governor's approval, that I'm going to work very, very hard to kind of broaden our field of view and help us understand things better and maybe see some opportunities out there that might help circumvent problems we're running into continuously at this, at this point in time. And one of those, I'd like to give you all a piece of paper, if that's okay. You know, the real main point here is the survival rates of this China virus. I don't say China virus to be a smart aleck or be cute. I say it because it is historically how we name viruses from their point of origin. And to kind of always keep in mind where this whole problem came from and try to deflect some of this partisan attacks and drawing line in the sand and people going after each other from a, from a political standpoint. So you're going to hear me call it the China virus, and I'd be grateful if you all would do the same. What I really want to introduce today, just very, very briefly, beyond the survival rates, is this Great Barrington Declaration. It's been put together by Dr. Budacera from Stanford, Dr. Koldor from Harvard, and Dr. Gupta from Oxford. And it's been signed by 33,143 medical practitioners, is signed by 11,622 medical and public health scientists, and from over 600,000 concerned citizens. It's readily available on the internet, and again, that's the Great Barrington Declaration. I'm going to give each of y'all a copy of it. This is incredibly simple look at the entire situation and where some of our shortcomings are being made. But just in a couple more minutes of time, I want you all to understand that the survival rates for the China virus among Kansans in the 0 to 17 age group, which is our K through 12 age group, is an even 100%. It's not rounded up to 100. It is 100. From 18 to 24, survival rate is 99.9%. 25 to 34-year-old age class, 99.9%. 45 to 54, 99.7. All comers, it's 98.8%. Outside of the nursing homes, it's 99.3% survival rate. We need to keep that in mind. As you all study the Great Barrington Declaration, you're going to, you're going to read about focused protection. And I think that's particularly important right now. Focused protection means we take what we know about this virus, and what we know is who it particularly affects, and that's the older population. And it starts to craft a means by which we preferentially and selectively create systems to protect them from exposure to the virus. And that's an incredibly important part of this in that we are currently chasing everybody, and a huge percent of the population have no problems whatsoever with this virus, even less of a mortality rate than with the average common flu. It's, it's less.
Mr. Stephan, your five minutes are up. Would you please conclude in the next few seconds?
Sure will. Thank you, Mr. Sellers. The bottom line is I'm going to be here for two months to help us bring in some new experts, to broaden the field of view, and attack this from, hopefully, from a little bit different direction so we can do it successfully and safely and with the economy moving forward. It's a balancing act. You're going to hear today from mental health horizons that we are seeing big issues from our mental health patients.
I appreciate your comments. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, our next, is there anybody else that wants to speak for their five minutes in the, outside? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda at this point in time. I think the, we do have an addition, and that's the vouchers for the COVID payments to the nonprofits of $823,829.38. The vouchers for today are $625,349.20. Item B is to approve a quote from Carpets Plus for carpet for the youth services department, part of, part of their square footage. And item C is the purchase of a used vehicle for the health department for a cost of not to exceed $20,000. Is there a motion to approve these items?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as provided by staff with the inclusion of the Sparks money.
Okay, I would second that with the comment that I continue to want to thank the county administrator and the two gentlemen that we hired, John Beerdoff and our past county administrator, to help us with these. I think our county has been a leader in the state in getting this done on time, helping everybody within the county. We've seen other counties that just kept this money for themselves, but in my opinion, we've done a great job of helping as many within the community as possible.
Commissioner Sellers, I see Kyle here from, from our maintenance department, vehicle maintenance. Do you have anything, Kyle? I just.
Kyle Berg, Automotive Director. I think I pretty much spelled everything out. This is a used 2007 Malibu that we'd like its meetings to go. It's been through two departments, been involved in collision, front and rear, in need of repairs that I feel is excessive for the value of the vehicle.
I think that was in our part that was sent out to us, and so we agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
New vehicle for the health department. Any other comments? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Okay, is our gentleman here for the?
Yes, Kevin.
Bondi?
Yes, Kevin's on his way.
Great. Let me introduce this, and then you and Randy can discuss it for the commission. Item 8A is a resolution 2020-31 authorizing and providing for landfill improvements and providing for the payment of the costs thereof. And this is going to be presented by Kevin Cohen of Gilmore and Bell, which is our bond council, and also our county administrator. Gentlemen.
Can I jump in? Sure. Good morning. So this is, is something you all have been through before. In fact, just a month or so ago, authorized the courthouse improvement projects, and so this is just part of the process of, of getting authorized to issue bonds for a project. And under our state statute, if you want to be authorized to issue bonds for a landfill improvement project, that process requires an intent resolution, which is what this is, and then a publication, two publications, and then waiting through a 30-day period. So this is, is the beginning of that process. If you've looked through the resolution, it just recites your statutory authority, which is KSA 19-2658, to make various landfill improvements, acquire equipment, do all the things necessary in connection with solid waste disposal facility. And then Section 1 authorizes this specific project, which is convenience center building, scale house, drop-off area, related drives, parking curbs, sidewalks. I included fiber extension because I know that's a possible item to be included, and then all the related fencing, drainage, electrical improvements. And based on the estimated costs that I had, had been given, if, you've got a pretty good estimate on all the things other than the fiber that I saw, and that was like $4,830,000. Fiber is maybe up to $500,000. And so if you see in Section 1, the number that's there, the authorized amount for bonds is $4,940,000. So that was a $4,830,000 plus up to maybe $500,000 for the fiber, if that's included, and then added 2% for just finance costs, kind of the standard stuff to get a transaction done. So that's your not-to-exceed amount. If this is adopted and becomes effective, that just means you're authorized to do up to $4,940,000. If you get bids that are better than that, if you don't proceed with the fiber component, and this is a $3 million project, that's fine. You don't use all this authority, you only use 3 million of this authority. So, so again, sort of shot high there to be conservative, and, and Section 2 authorizes the bonds in the amount not to exceed $4,940,000. Section 3 reimbursement authorization, and we, we talk about this occasionally. With that, Section 3, under federal tax law, if you now spend cash on this project in the next number of months, that's what authorizes you to reimburse the cash from bond proceeds, tax-exempt bond proceeds, whenever you get there. If it's early next year, if it's a year from now, if it's two years from now, you can, can reimburse any cash expenditures. And then Section 4 just talks about the notice of intent that must be published. And I will add, because I think it's always useful to point this out, that this is a general obligation bond issue or authorized general obligation bonds, but under the statute and then under the way that the county has, has operated in the past on its landfill, that the intention is that you're going to use landfill revenue to pay the debt service. And so this is something of a double-barrel bond. You're going to use revenue, and only if that's insufficient would you ever get into, well, this is a full faith and credit obligation, so we have to figure out how we're going to pay it, including raising taxes if necessary, which probably won't be. But it's, again, kind of a double-barrel pledge and, and full faith and credit if needed. So that's, that's all. If this is adopted, the notice of intent will be published in the next couple of weeks, and by mid-December, you'll be authorized to issue the bonds. Things aren't moving that quickly, but you'll have that authorization, and I know bids are maybe going to be due on this project in around that same timeframe. So time-wise, that works pretty well.
Randy, do you have anything to add to that?
Just the, kind of the general timeline for the landfill project. They're going out to bid hopefully this week or next week, early November. The bids are going to be due December 7th, and it'll probably be the end of December, a meeting when those bids will be brought by Megan to the commission for consideration, either end of December, early January. So that was one of the reasons, worked with Kevin, to get this resolution in front of you now, so that the time is, can be effective, the end of December. If the end of December is when you approve a contract or January, we'll have the financing mechanism allowed, not in place because we don't have the bonds, but the mechanism allowed.
And that's a good point. I should have mentioned it earlier. When you're authorized to issue bonds, that, and you don't have to have issued them yet, just the authorization provides the cash basis law exception that will allow you to accept contracts and make those commitments without encumbering cash funds. Just having the authorization would allow you to accept contracts in December, knowing, you know, we may issue the bonds at some point in the future. We're not there yet, but we also don't have to worry about the cash basis law because we're authorized with bonds. So that, that's part of it, too, to get you to mid-December, and if you need to accept bids and enter into contracts, you'll be authorized to do that under the cash basis law.
Kevin, could you visit just a moment on what you've been seeing the past, say, two months or so forth in, in the rate system? Is it pretty steady, or is it up down?
It is. It has been very steady with incredibly low interest rates. And I'm trying to remember now off the top of my head, the transaction is closing this week, and I don't think when I was here last in September it had, had sold yet, but Harvey County refinanced some bonds within the last month, and again, closing this week. And it's a 13-year, I think, amortization schedule, so not, not long-term, not 20, but not really short either. And their, their average borrowing rate, true interest cost, kind of an average, was less than 1%. So incredibly low. Rates have jumped up a little bit, although that was maybe two weeks ago, and I think some of that is just a supply and demand thing. Rates are low, there are a lot of refinancings coming to market, and then I think you have a market that, that wanted to avoid buying and having any bond deals committed to this week because of the election. Just, it's going to be a crazy few days, let's just see how things go. So I would expect rates to continue to be low. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but, but again, we've seen some historically low rates, and, and maybe we've come off historic lows a little bit, but I, no crystal ball, but I would be surprised if we're not operating in a very, very low-interest rate environment for a while.
I would think with Federal Reserve's attitude right now.
That's as much as anything. There's.
Randy, you expressed a month or two ago that you were going to review, and maybe that was with Kevin, our outstanding debts and so forth. Do we have any opportunities to do any refinancing, or are you still studying that?
That was with Greg from Raymond James, the bond, or the financial advisor. We've looked at it, and with, we already have relatively low rates, and with the payoffs, there's not much we can do right now.
Okay, good.
And we're close to paying off one bond here shortly.
Right. We don't have any real long-term ones that are high-interest rates, so.
Okay. Your really long-term and larger bond issue was for the jail. I mean, if it was still outstanding, that would probably be a good candidate, but the good news is you had plenty of cash and you paid it off early.
Anybody remember the rate we were paying on the jail? That'd be before your time.
I don't. I mean, it was prob, that's for more than 10 years now. We've operated in a low-interest rate environment, just a question of how low, and, and we're in a really, really low.
And we were certainly fortunate to be able to pay the jail off, what, over a year early?
Yep. And that's thanks to the people who shop locally.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other questions?
Have none.
Would you make a motion, Commissioner Hurst?
Yes, I will. I would move Resolution 2020-31 to authorize and provide for landfill improvements and providing for the payment of the costs thereof by Randy Partington, County Administrator, and Kevin Cowan, Gilmore and Bell Bond Council.
Okay, I would second that motion. Okay, I would second that motion. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry I had to drive all the way over here for such a short presentation.
No, I am. I told Randy, I'm always happy to come over here, but on this busy election day, it was good to get out of the office and do some regular work.
Since we didn't take a lot of your time, visit the Cosmosphere, go to the salt mine.
That's true.
Yeah.
That is true. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, our next item is a quarterly report by Horizon's Mental Health. Mike Garrett, Chief Executive Officer of Horizons, welcome.
Good morning.
Mike, you're always very concise in on your reports and so forth, and very detailed. We always enjoy having you come to report.
Well, I've provided you with the agenda and three accompanying documents that I want to go over. Want to talk about our financial position, some of the impact of where we're at clinically and what we're, how we're serving people, and then just a couple of brief comments about what I see going on at the state level. The first financial statement that you have in front of you is our year-end. At the top, it's highlighted to date ended June 30th, 2020. So I just want to go over that fairly quickly with you. I highlighted the areas that I want to draw your attention to. First line is the total patient revenue for FY 2020 was 12.7 million dollars. The previous year was at 13.2 million dollars, so about $500,000 difference. And then total deductions from revenue came in at 3.4 million. Last year was 3.6 million, which I would anticipate, given that the gross patient charges were more, so that's reasonable. Net patient revenue was 9.3 million. Last year was just a tad under 9.6 million, so off by about 250,000. Other operating revenue was at 4.1 million. Last year was 3.5. That was due to two things. One is a slight bump in the state funding that we have from the state of Kansas. And just a quick note, our funding from the state of Kansas right now is only $30,000 more than it was in 2006. So we're still 14 years behind in terms of inflationary costs. And then we also had some grants that were paid to us that affected that other operating revenue. So total operating revenue was 13.4 million. Last year was 13.1. And then our expenses are the next several line items. FY 20 was 13.3 million. Last year was 12.7 million. So our earnings before an interest and depreciation was 138,000, where the previous year it was 380,000, a little bit under that. And the biggest difference, if you look at the expenses, are the salaries and employee benefits. And that's to be expected in a professional organization. Last year, we did have $161,000 in depreciation, so we ended up with a negative margin of 23,669. And given with the COVID experience the last quarter of the year, I don't like it, but I don't feel that bad about it either. So it's real close to breaking even. It was at a negative 0.18% margin. The next financial statement, income statement, is for the first quarter of this year. The columns on the left are the month of September. The columns on the right represent our first quarter for July, August, and September this year. And I'll really focus predominantly on the right side of the document. So for the first quarter of this year, just a little bit over $3 million. Last year was at 3.25. Total deductions, about 890,000. Last year was at 892,000, which is somewhat concerning that it's only down $2,000 when revenue's down over $200,000. Net patient revenue, 2.15. Last year was at 2.36 million dollars. Then other operating revenue, 939,956 last year. So total operating revenue for the first quarter of this year is just a little bit under 3.1 million. Last year was at 3.3 million, so off by about a quarter of a million dollars. Our expenses, again, are the next several line items. Total expenses for the first quarter of this year is at 3.4 million. Last year was at 3.27. And we're showing a negative margin of 345,000. If you follow that line item over to September on the far left, you'll see that September showed a negative EBITDA of just a little under $18,000. So August was a really tough month for us. July wasn't too bad, but August was really tough. We had a lot of people take PTO during that time. And when people are gone out of the office, we have a lot of lost revenue because they aren't seeing people. And I'll explain a couple of other things that I think are coming into play with people being exposed to COVID and being out of the office. Our depreciation is 48,000 a year today, so we have a negative margin of 394,000 for the first quarter. I want to kind of go off on a side note, and then I'll come back to this. We originally thought we were eligible for the PPP, the Payroll Protection Plan. We received $2.1 million for that. Our attorneys and our auditors determined, though, that we were not eligible for that, so we paid that loan back. When we thought we were going to be eligible for that program, we didn't exempt out of the FF-CRA program. And that's basically when people are ordered to be quarantined, have exposure, taking care of a loved one, or if the schools are closed or daycares are closed, they can be home taking care of their kids. That first one, if it's a self-quarantine, they have to quarantine for 10 days, and we have to pay them full pay for 10 days. The second one, if they're quarantined due to a household member or caring for a COVID family member, it's 10 days, we pay them 2/3 of their salary. If they're home due to childcare because schools are shut down or daycares are shut down, the first 10 days are out of their own PTO bank, but then the next 10 weeks are on our payroll at 2/3 pay. And that's a substantial amount of money. We have about 27 people on that program so far. So if they're out of the office in one of these FF-CRA programs, that increases our payroll but without the revenue. And we had a lot of that in August as well. We have received some stimulus funds. We did receive the Provider Relief Funds through HHS, Health and Human Services. That was about $205,000. And then we received some Sparks Funds through KDads, which is kind of a pass-through through HHS of a little bit over $400,000. That money's not reflected in this income statement right now. As I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of administrative accounting for those monies before you can really recognize that as income, whether it's COVID-related expense. There's some concern and discussion. It's a pretty complicated formula for what constitutes lost revenue due to COVID. And one of the things we're looking at is, will it cover that FF-CRA expense that we have with employees that have to be out due to COVID? I would think that it would. We'll have our attorneys and our auditors look into that. So that amount of money, that, about $615,000 is not recognized in this income statement, but it should by the end of the year. We're supposed to be spending this money by December 31st. That deadline might be extended. We aren't sure about that yet. As you're well aware...
So will that money offset your problems for this current quarter also?
Well, a lot of the expenses that we've already had, we've probably spent close to $85,000 just making facility changes to try to ensure safety of staff and consumers that come into our buildings. And so that will be reimbursed. And then it's an issue of how we define lost revenue due to COVID. I would think that with people out on the FF-CRA, any revenue that we would have anticipated getting from the services they would have provided would be lost revenue, plus their wages should be eligible for that. So it's really figuring out what we can actually submit to KDads and HHS to justify the expenditure of those funds. It's interesting when we look at the service that we've been providing to our consumers. Back in March and April, televideo was fairly new to everybody and trying to figure it out, and it was a lot easier to engage people. The schools kind of shut down and didn't do a lot of televideo education at that time. We've continued to do that. We probably have 60% of our services back person-to-person right now, with a lot of safety guidelines in place. What we're experiencing, though, with the loss of revenue is that the number of people we're seeing is higher, not by a lot, but it is higher. The number of events that we have with individuals is higher, but the length of time of those events is less. It's become increasingly hard to engage kids via Zoom, especially being in school now and they're on televideo for six hours. And then we want them after school or early evening, and they just don't want to do it, is what it comes down to. What we have noticed, though, is a real increase in our medication services. Our no-show rate for medication services has become virtually nil, and people like being able to access our services either through telephone or televideo services. The National Emergency Declaration allowed the broadening of televideo services that can be reimbursed through Medicare and Medicaid. What will happen once that expires, we aren't sure. But that's been a real benefit to us and a benefit to our consumers as well, that that's been allowed. We do monitor all of our staff's service hours that we ask them to provide. We want to make sure that we're meeting all of our treatment plan needs for our patients that we still see, and that's growing. I think probably the biggest thing that we have to address with our staff as well as our consumers, and you guys are very much aware of this, is the uncertainty about what's going on. Everybody's really anxious, apprehensive, and exhausted. You know, the term COVID fatigue, and we've coined one Zoom fatigue, that people are just tired and want to move on, but we just can't yet. And so that's a big challenge for a lot of our staff. On a state issue, a couple of things very quickly. One is that it's, the state revenues haven't dropped as drastically as people anticipated them dropping, which is good news for us. And then obviously, the elections today will have a big impact on us, whether that's at the national, the state, or the local level as well. The last document I provided to you is the Public Policy Agenda for the Association of Community Mental Health Centers. The Kansas Association of Counties and the Association of Community Mental Health Centers have had a real strong partnership over the last several years. And many of the public policy platforms that the Kansas Association of Counties had supported many of ours with mental health initiatives, because they saw that as a benefit to the counties with many of those initiatives. And we would usually participate in your annual conference, but that was usually in November. And I think you had that last month, second week in October, something that was virtual. I provided this document to you with the hope that when you talk to our legislators, especially our state legislators, and any issues relative to mental health come up, this would provide you with some information about what would be beneficial to our consumers as well as to our communities. The last I want to say is, we are currently in our fall consumer satisfaction survey time period. We do that for two weeks. We ask everybody that comes for a service to rate us, and so I'll have that information for you in January when I come back with the next quarterly report.
Do you expect those ratings to change much due to your Zoom meetings?
You know, that's a really good question. I hadn't thought about it that way. I obviously always want them to go up. They've been fairly steady. I would think that when we ask about accessibility and timeliness of appointments, that'll probably go up, I would think. I'm not sure. I hope that they go up, because I think accessibility is probably the key. But so we've kind of altered our strategy just recently of, if a child is scheduled to have community services for an hour and a half a week, instead of that being in an hour and maybe a half hour, we might have five contacts with them, a shortened amount of times. So we're really trying to alter that and meet where that consumer is, given everything else that's going on in that person's world. So we're hoping that they stay the same. They've been very strong, and maybe even improve.
Mark Stephan mentioned, as the national reports, that there's concerns for mental health due to more suicides, et cetera, and so forth. Could you relate to what you're seeing in regard to that aspect?
We have a lot more crises, and that's been alarming to the hospital, because a lot of them run through the emergency department, and so they're already overwhelmed with medical cases, let alone behavioral health cases. And so that has increased dramatically. And Larnard State Hospital has been at capacity. This morning, they had three people on their waiting list. So there's a waiting list, which really puts a strain on law enforcement as well as emergency room departments, because they'd have no place to send these people now. And so I think there is an increase in that.
I noticed in Kansas clips that we got that Central County has seen a large rise in suicide rates as well as those contemplating.
Right.
And that goes back to what I've said all along. When you shut things down and do these things, you put additional stress, and not enough stress is put upon the mental aspect of this. It's all been physical.
Well, we definitely...
And I think that's starting to be known.
We don't want to isolate people, and that was a big focus of ours back in March, April, and has continued to be that, that we've got to engage people. We don't want them isolating in their homes, increasing that level of depression, but we need to do that in a safe manner.
Okay, so do you still have staff off due to virtual school and things of, you know, daycare and so forth?
One of the challenges is, for example, with USD 308, I think they're in their fourth iteration of service in terms of their model. And so our staff have to be incredibly flexible as to, you know, there were, for a while when school started, Billy was in school five days a week, and then was only in school every other day, and then was home, and now he's back to being every other day. And so our staff have to be flexible in terms of finding Billy and how to have access to Billy. So that's been a real challenge for us. And so we've moved from some staff being home all the time to now being home every other day, which we have to work with their appointments to try to get them covered. So it's a logistical issue as well as a financial one.
I don't think we, everybody took into the effects of the shutdown and what it meant to allied services and their ability to provide those services to the citizens that needed it, and that's coming home to roost, so to speak, right now. Is that a fair statement?
Well, we're definitely working hard to make sure we provide people with the cure that they need and remain engaged with them, and that they can remain engaged with significant people in their lives in a meaningful way and a safe way.
I know I made the statement, I was on a six-hour Zoom one day, and the last thing I wanted to do was sit around more and do another one.
Right.
Mike, do you see any differences between your population in the more metro, if you call Hudges a metro, and your outline, Kingman County and the other counties that you deal with? with?
You know, one of the biggest problems we have is internet access. That's the biggest challenge, especially, you know, Reno is referred to as kind of a rural urban area, and then we have Pratt, Kingman, and Harper that are rural, and then Barbara County, which is frontier. And so that's a challenge to be able to just establish internet connections.
Is that your classification of Reno?
No, that's the states.
It is?
It is.
That's okay.
Yeah, based on population density per square mile.
Frontier, okay.
Yeah, that's the state's designation.
And so you're seeing less internet service out there in the rural areas?
Very sporadic and less reliable. Time of day makes a difference, weather conditions make a difference.
I know one company that has some pretty extensive fiber optics in some of that area. One cooperative does.
I know that they're working to expand that, and I think that would be great to get that broadband service everywhere. That's very important.
Well, I think your report shows that you've done a good job of trying to maintain contact with your clients, and I'm glad that you don't show a bigger loss than you do with those funds. Maybe next quarter you'll see an evening on there.
That's what we're hoping for. That's our plan.
Are you seeing a little more with regarding the youth that are having more stress and needing a little more assistance?
I do, and I think a lot of it is so much togetherness with family, and I know that's kind of, you know, it's hard to think that way.
No peer, no peer relationships.
No.
Decreased peer relationships.
Right. And my wife teaches at the high school here, and all of her kids want to come back to the school, and they talk about how challenging it is to find a place to have a place free of distractions so they can do their schoolwork. And so I think people together that much can be pretty stressful on a lot of folks, especially kids.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
I don't believe there's any action on this.
Always got a great report here.
Yes, very thorough. Thank you, Mike. Okay, our next item this morning is Item C, a bid award to Reese Construction Company for construction of Silver Lake Bridge 13.90, located one mile north and 11.1 miles west of Pretty Prairie. Had a total cost $269,067, of which federal funds will pay $215,254, and the remaining $54,000 will be paid by county funds. Don Britton with our Public Works Director is here to present this.
Good morning, Don Britton, Public Works Director. You just about said everything I needed to say. So this is Silver Lake Bridge 1390. Like you said, 11 miles west of Pretty Prairie and one mile north of Peace Road and a quarter, a tenth mile back west on Silver Lake. This bridge was accepted into KDOT's Office System Bridge Funding. The federal cost share is, like you said, 80%, and the county would be 20%. They would be paying a federal $215,254. We'd be paying $54,000. It's my recommendation that you award Reese Construction Company for the contract of building this bridge for $269,067.
Okay, Don, were there other bids received on this project?
Yes.
I'm looking through here, and I don't see that should help. I'm not sure you included it. Did you see it? Could you tell us about other bids? Do you have that information?
I should have it. We all should have it.
Well, it might be here.
I know L&amp;M was right under that bid. I...
Okay.
I don't find it.
Was there more than two bids or just...
Yes, there was more than two bids.
Okay.
I think there was four bids.
Four bids, and this was the low bid?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, well, I think my question there was, I was hoping that it was a competitive project.
Yes, there were several bids.
Okay. Okay, the only other question I have is a little more education that I need on how do you determine the priority for these things? I assume that's due to a survey, and then you go through a checking order, and so we only have so much money for bridges, and our bridge budget's huge, but how do you determine is the worst-ranking bridge the next on the list?
Well, I determine that myself, and part of that is the worst ranking, part of that is the traffic, the traffic on that bridge, the use of the bridge, the condition of the road that the bridge is on. So all that goes into it. And this happens to be a bridge that already had planned on replacing next year. So this, so I thought, well, this is one that we planned on replacing in-house, so why not try to get some federal money on it? So turned it in, and we happened to do get federal money on it. We could have built this bridge in-house for $150,000, but when you go through KDOT, everything gets much more expensive. But even saying that, being as a KDOT project, we had to spend $39,000 on engineering, which we normally wouldn't spend. And then it's the $39,000 plus the $54,000 that we only have to pay equals 93. So we're still saving $57,000 on this bridge, and while they're building that one, we'll be building a different one. So it's a good plan.
Okay, I'm glad you explained that to us. I did not know that. Commissioner Hirst, do you have any questions on this item?
I have no questions. Looked it over, and so therefore I would make a motion to bid, award the bid to Reese Construction Company for the construction of Silver Lake Bridge 13.9, located a mile north and 11.1 mile west of Pretty Prairie, a total cost of $269,060, of which federal funds will pay $215,254, and the remaining amount of $54,000 will be paid by the county funds.
I will second that, and I'll also apologize to Don, because I've just found that the other bids are on the information that was provided to us. Reese at 268, L&amp;M at 271, AM Coron at 290, and Bridges, Inc. at 296. I apologize that I didn't see that document. Trying to save paper and sometimes that is an issue.
Yeah, I didn't bring mine, so I just lost.
Okay, I seconded that motion. Further discussion, if not, Randy, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner, could we have about a five-minute recess before we go to the planning quit?
Okay, we're going to recess until 10:25. Give you seven minutes, sir.
All right, thank you.
That's for today, and that's a item going to be presented by our county planning director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Von Anchen, County Planner. This is first, a request by an applicant to vacate the north 85 feet of a 16-foot-wide utility easement located in Cedar View Lodge Replant, which is in the southeast corner of the county, right along the lake. Before this petition was placed on the agenda, we got with the utility department here at the county, because this area is actually served by a sewer district, and so we wanted to check with the utility department to determine if they had any use for this easement. After visiting with the utility division here, they determined that they did not have much use for that easement, but they would like to reserve the southern 25 feet of this utility easement just for the purpose of turning a vehicle around or utilizing the area as a backhoe in case they have to work on the sewer line. But this, this part of the easement just terminates on this gentleman's property. There is nothing in there right now that is of use. We also sent notices to other utility companies in the area and received no word back from them that they have any use for that easement. So with vacations, it's a little bit different than other planning cases that we discuss here. The county commission must find that proper notice was provided to the public. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. So with that, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 15th to consider this vacation, and they approved of the vacation by a four-to-zero vote. And so with that, I would stand for any questions by the county commission.
I have none. It's pretty well outlined here.
I would make the motion that we approve Planning Case 2020-10.
Second that motion.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this action? Not, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Next item is Item E, Planning Case 2020-11, a request to vacate 20-foot-wide sidewalk easement between lots five and lots six of Lot 2, Lot 13, and 14, Lot 1 of Random Acres Subdivision. Mark.
This is a request by four applicants, actually. This sidewalk easement, like you said, Commissioner, is located in Random Acres, which is located just on East Fourth Avenue, just outside the city limits of Hutchinson. The applicant would like to vacate this sidewalk easement. Unfortunately, we did not get signatures for the eastern part of this sidewalk easement from two other applicants, so that sidewalk easement will have to remain in place until such time as somebody signs an application to vacate. But same procedure as the other case we just heard here, sent utility companies a notice of this public hearing and this request, and no utility companies responded with any concerns. Again, the county commission must find that proper notice was given. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. Staff recommends approval of this. The planning commission held a public hearing again on October the 15th, and they recommended approval of this request by a four-to-nothing vote. My report kind of outlines what happened at the public hearing. There was not much discussion on this case. So with that, if you have questions for me.
So you're saying that the easement between lots five and six is a go, but because you didn't get signatures on lots 14 and 13, it's not?
That's...
Is that correct?
Uh...
Have I got the right lot?
No, you got lots five and six. If you look at your site plan, that is not highlighted, so that sidewalk easement still remains in place. The applicant for this, Mr. Mark, tried to get signatures from those owners, and he was not able to make contact with those owners, and so that part of the easement will stay in place until such time as an application is submitted. However, the part of the sidewalk easement that's located between lots five and six and lots 13 and 14, which is highlighted in orange, is what you're considering for today. I'd like to have taken care of the whole entire sidewalk easement, but unfortunately, I did not get signatures from the owners of those two lots out there.
I was, I just looked here. I was looking at the top, and then I see what you're talking about here, the bottom that aren't marked, but there are another five and six lots.
Yeah, there's another five, yeah, there's another five and six, different block. Correct, yeah, that's why I want to make sure you understand, right?
Is there a motion by the commission on this item?
I would move to approve Planning Case 2020-11 as presented.
I will second that. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Thank you, Mark, for being here today. Okay, the next item of business is the weekly county administrator report.
Items I have today, just in the packet was the financials, the budget report. Didn't know if there was any questions. Quick overview, the revenues are good right now, so the county's seeing revenues that are more than the expenditures year-to-date. Property taxes have been coming in on time, good amount. Sales tax, as we mentioned last week, are good, so things are looking good right now. Expenditures, most of the expenditures, and if you look at on the budget report, most of the consistent expenditures are personnel. So, and this does not have the 12.6 million, or the part of Reno County's portion doesn't show up as like a revenue in this, in these numbers. But expenditures that are offset do take place in the budgets. So some of the money has been absorbed because of the Sparks money, but the numbers are not inflated because of that money. So departments are doing a good job of holding their spending, and revenues are coming in good, so things are looking really good.
So your expectations would be that we'll be under budget for the whole years?
Yes, we should be, yes. We should be in good position when we do the 2022 budget in 2021 for the following year. We should be in really good condition. Didn't know if you had any questions on that report.
I appreciate your report.
Yes, I think the update that you've been giving us is good on that. I guess the comment I would make here, and I hope I'm not too premature, but the fact that we're in good shape with this year's budget, and possibly we'll have some carryover going into next year's budget, makes me wish that the public better understood the state tax lid that the county is under. And I'm wondering if maybe you could visit with the Kansas Association of Counties or whoever that maybe in the next few months could give us a presentation on the tax lid, because as I see it, when we're in a strong place and we could actually move down a couple mils and save the taxpayers some money in a given tax year, our fear is we don't know what two or three years out is and what that is. And Ron, you're going to have to help me with the details here, but if you lower your taxes in a given year, it's an average for the state tax lid, and you could end up harming the county greatly by being conservative commissioners. Is that close to being true?
I think that pretty well states it, except the fact that if you do lower and something happens, then what services are we going to have to cut in order to keep under the legislative lid that was put on us? I think that's correct. Am I right?
And I guess, I know a lot of people follow the county commission meetings and follow what we do, budgeting money and spending money, and as I even looked at this year's budget, I think I would have been willing to cut some items out of that budget, but I am so fearful of not knowing what we need for the future. And so the tax lid imposed upon us by the state of Kansas, to me, is harmful to the taxpayers instead of being helpful to the taxpayers. And if there's an outline or a video or something that we could show to the taxpayers to better show that, maybe they would be better willing to speak to some of their representatives at the state.
That might be a spot for our new marketing person to work with Laura, to might, something there to work out.
She's in marketing, she's not statistics.
No, but she can present. You want people to know.
We can have Lori put some slides or something together, graphics.
I'm just wondering if there might be somebody from Kansas Association of Counties that is, could explain it in layman's terms what we're up against.
I agree with you on that part. I just was trying to carry a step further to get information out.
Sure.
If that's, if it's a, if we can figure out a way to get it so people understand it, which that's difficult for even us, it took a long time.
I agree, I agree.
And I can work with Lori on that. We can get something put together. Just a heads up, though, from what I'm hearing at the, up in Topeka from KAC or LKM, is kind of this last legislative session, it'll probably be a different tax lid, a different transparency. The same bill, I think it was Senate Bill 294, or this tax bill that was on the floor earlier this year will probably come back. So it kind of gets rid of the tax lid in some aspects, but it puts different requirements of publication and extra work that is going to be hard to get done with current staff and money we have.
Yeah, the publication of any increases by any group that levies taxes was ridiculous on that bill as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation.
That's, that's okay. The other item, just, I've kind of mentioned it to you, but we're looking, I'm working with... Nope, with the, I guess the, what we're hearing from the medical community, the COVID issue with social distancing will probably last at least through next year. So having three commissioners present to get the six feet in between each of you, the current bench up there does not work. I think you're only about two feet apart probably when all three of you would be up there. So we're looking at options, taking that bench down, maybe the elevation down, and either go all the way from wall to wall, or do like an L-shaped. So we're looking at options. If you have any comments or concerns, let me know, because it will cost a little bit of money, but this room's not really set up the best for social distancing. But to get 10, no more than 10 people in here and then six feet apart for the commissioners, it's, it's going to take a lot of the space right here.
Certainly. Ron, do you have any comments? Did you see those sketches that they sent out?
Yeah, I did, I did. I have no problem with looking at it from that aspect, I think. The options, the options are not really, they're hard to come up. If we move down to the other room, then we have to move everything there, and which to me would be pretty ideal, but I'm not sure it's cost efficient.
Yeah, you guys could, or not permanently, but for a long term, move to the veterans' room. The problem is the HVAC is loud in there, and the column blocks some views. We probably could set it up if you wanted us to go there. We'd have to move the audio and visual down there, Granicus system.
I think probably an L-shaped works best for this room.
Yeah, I think I agree with Commissioner Hirst that on a temporary matter, we could take out the raised platform and move this back so that there's more room within the room. Maybe we could get a couple more people. I don't think, in my opinion, it's a long-term fix. I, I've always believed as a commissioner, even before I was on the commission, that this room is too small to encourage people to come and talk to us. There's, was several times when I had issues as a citizen that I came in, and there was no place to sit, and that was before COVID. And so I really think some long-term thoughts need to be considered for the future location of the county commission. But in the short run, I think that L-shaped table that you sent out would work.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Any other items?
The only other item is with the COVID 10-day challenge that the health department's putting out, I'll be working with departments. I know that there's been some directors asking about, does this mean they're going to be working remotely? We have limited remote access. I think we have 100 licenses or access points, so to speak, so we can buy more, but we need to see how many people can work remotely. So for the next couple weeks, you may see or hear about more departments being remote. Just kind of giving you an update on that.
Okay, would you also bring up the fact that the county commission has a work session tomorrow morning at 9:00, and the items that will be discussed in that work session?
Tomorrow at 10:00, it's 10:00 a.m. to noon. It's down in the veterans' room on, tomorrow, Wednesday. Where the first item is going to be Granicus, an agenda software, a demo from Granicus for consider, or no decisions will be asked for tomorrow, just direction, just to give you some information, the Granicus item. And then we will have Renee will talk about possibly in the near future, before the end of the year, going out for a request for proposal for a pay study for county employees. It's been numerous years since that's been done. It hasn't been kept up as well as it should have been, and it's probably time for a new one. That'll be discussed. And then, beginning at 11:00 a.m., we will talk about the land, at the landfill, their fee schedule, kind of looking at financials in the next 10, 15 years, what different fees, user fees, or on the tax side, what that will look like for the overall impact of their budget and cash balance.
Is there a reason that that's at 11:00 a.m.?
Yes, the, one of the persons that Megan works with has a meeting till 11:00 a.m., and so we felt that it would be good, this is kind of what she specializes in, so to hear from her, her spreadsheet to explain, and it's the spreadsheet I already sent, sent everyone, but...
Okay, do you feel we'll be done in time to individually log on to that chamber meeting tomorrow noon? Was it 12:45?
Yes, I'm hoping we're done by noon, because it, again, this is really more informative for the commission, you guys to ask staff and myself questions, and then hopefully we'll have direction of when and, you know, what modifications before it comes to an actual commission meeting for action.
Okay, thank you. I just, I feel strongly that I would like to listen to the chamber meeting at 12:45 to hear the presentations that are going to be made.
We should be done by noon, yes.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Commissioner Hirst, do you have items this morning?
You know, I hope everybody got out and voted today. And I want to say, which no matter which way you voted, paraphrase a little bit what I heard the other day, is no matter whether you voted G or H, that we all need to move forward after this and, and, and work together, all with the intention of following Christ's word in our decisions. So that's basically all I had to say. I just, I think it's important that we start discussions and how we can move forward together.
I think from a county standpoint, we've, we usually can discuss things and move towards a good middle, don't you? Or are you speaking of other things besides the county?
I'm speaking of other things besides the county commission, okay? I meant, as a general rule of things that affect us from the top down.
It's intriguing to me that when I ran for county commission, we never realized what events might take place, and so I certainly was under the thought process that we would do more planning for the future and have more time to investigate alternative management considerations than we've had, and our time has been used to try to protect our people. Yeah, anything else, Commissioner?
Just, no, I...
I agree with you that there's way too much...
I think we can probably look at this as an opportunity before January to have some rapport and some conversations with our, with our state legislatures.
Okay, I do have a statement I'd like to read today as far as my comments. "I do not usually wear a suit coat to county meetings. Doing today, I am doing that in respect for our late Commissioner, Bob Bush. I am hoping to go to his funeral this weekend. Bob was a great community servant of Hutchinson and Reno County, serving on the city council for eight years, mayor twice, and then on the county commission for almost four years. If not for his health, I'm sure he would have run for an additional four-year term. His accomplishments for our community are too long to list. When Bob knew that his health was deteriorating, he discussed the issue with his friend he knew through exercise classes, his friend being Daniel Friesen, who he encouraged to run for his position, position on the county commission, knowing that his health would be failing and he could not run again. Bob hoped to be with us until his term ended, often coming to meetings feeling bad or being with us by phone, but never once did he complain about his health. I never heard him say how, how he felt, and I know at times he felt very, very poorly. Daniel Friesen has been attending our meetings for months in preparation to serve the county if Bob was not able to complete his term. He won the primary in August and is running today unopposed. He is ready and willing to serve the interim term for Bob until he officially takes office in early January 2021. Bob would be very disappointed that the Reno County Republican Party did not allow Daniel to represent his platform to the end of Bob's term. Bob Bush came from a background in social work. He worked for many years in Colorado in the social work field. He always respected the work of our health department and was very interested and dedicated to community health. As Chair of this commission till next January, I will work diligently to fulfill Bob's ideas until the installation of Daniel in January of 2021." Thank you. Is there any other business before the commission? Not, this commission meeting is adjourned.